Call meeting to order for the Ashland-Moorehead City Commission, so if you will rise, we'll ask you to do your application and we'll ask that you work some fuel with these in our pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for our city and how you blessed us in recent days. We ask for your Holy Spirit to come into our chambers and present over our meeting today. We ask for your wisdom and guidance over this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your help there. Motion to receive and file the agendas presented.
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move into our hearings and I'll start it off because we do have a proclamation today for Pathways. If you all would like to come up to the front while I read it, then it will give us an opportunity to present this to you. Glad to have you all here with us today. If you allow me, I'll read our proclamation. Whereas substance use and disorders and mental health conditions affect millions of individuals and families each year, impacting the health, the safety, and the well-being of our communities. Whereas recovery from substance use and mental health disorder is positive, and people in recovery achieve healthy, fulfilling, and meaningful lives with the support of families, peers, and community-based services. And whereas the City of Ashland recognizes the importance of raising awareness, reducing stigma, and promoting access to treatment, prevention, and long-term recovery and support. Whereas community organizations such as Pathway Inc. and countless peer-led recovery groups are leading the way in creating a culture of healing, resilience, and hope across our region. And whereas the National Recovery Month, celebrated each September since 1989, provides an opportunity to honor the achievements of individuals in recovery and dedication of those who support them. And whereas, by recognizing Recovery Month, we affirm our commitment to fostering a compassionate, inclusive, and recovery-ready community. Now therefore, I Chuck D. Charles, Mayor of the City of Ashland, do proclaim that September 2025 is Recovery Month in the City of Ashland, and encourage all of our residents to support recovery efforts, celebrate the strength of our community, and help at the end of stigma surrounding addiction and mental illness. And congratulations. We did have a very successful, I'd say, Blazer had their cross-country invitation last night in our city park and they showed off to a lot of different counties and schools that were here. They probably had probably close to 2,000 people there from all over, I think maybe eight or 10 different schools. And just congratulations to them. So Commissioner, do you want to start off?
How did you place in that race?
I started, I was the honorary start. So I was there at the finish line and at the starting line today.
Congratulations. I don't have anything to add, so.
All right.
Look forward to heading down to the fire department tonight to usher in a new piece of equipment. And if I may take a personal privilege here, my daughter is a senior in Morehead State, majoring in computer science. And this summer, she was gracious enough, or not gracious enough, lucky enough to be able to serve an internship with the Ashland Police Department. And I really want to thank them. She, her eyes were open and she may have made some different career decisions after that internship, so thank you, Ryan, and Chief Kelly and all that had a part to do with that.
Very good. Commissioner Martin.
Happy Labor Day and be safe.
Mr. Good.
I just wanted to welcome everybody. We do have a lot of things going on. Of course, the Labor Day celebration in Catlisleburg is kicking off this weekend and I always look forward to going to the parade and all the festivities up in Catlisleburg on Monday. Next week, we're going to have an Antique Roadshow at September the 6th there on the Plaza. And after that, Pope Landing Days is coming up.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth? Gotcha. And then we had a Capital Projects meeting here last week and it is really eye-opening to sit in on these meetings because there's so many projects going on in the city. Each department has a ton of projects going on. And so I'm happy with all our departments. Tonight, we're going to the wedding ceremony, wedding, not wedding, but wedding at the Ashland Fire Department and I'm looking forward to that for our newest fire truck. We had four retirements in the Ashland Fire Department, very quality individuals that have been there a very long time. But thankfully, we have four quality recruits that are training right now, two of which I coached a couple of years ago and I mean, they are really good recruits, so I'm thankful for that. Thank you for coming today.
Great. All right, Mr. Wheeler, you want to introduce our city manager?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor, on the city manager's report. On that wedding ceremony tonight, I just want to make sure to mention a reminder that 6:00 PM at Central Station, that's engine number two, new engine number two, so make sure to remember that. Also, on the race, the cross-country race that you mentioned, I wanted to make sure to mention a special thanks to Director of Public Services, Sean Murray, Superintendent Amber Berry and their staff for their work on that. Due to a communication error on my part, they had very, very little notice to get that done. And as far as I know, when off the hitch, it was a great success. So we really appreciate the park staff work, Sean, and your folks, really appreciate that. And also believe fire and police had a hand in it as well, so appreciate their support. Director Atkins, if you could now come up. I believe it's Engineering's turn to make a report to the commission and may have some additional information to share about a program going on mandated by the EPA, I believe.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak on behalf of the Engineering Department. To start off, I just wanted to give some quick statistics on projects that the Engineering Department is involved in. So we are currently involved in 25-plus projects and these are projects that are currently being, plans are currently being made for them or projects are currently under construction. These projects total over $122 million with the $99-plus million wastewater treatment plant included. Since January 1st of 2025, we've completed eight projects. To list a few, we've completed the front entrance step project on 17th Street, the Deboard Hill tank rehabilitation project, and 26th Street pump station rehab project. So then I wanted to go in and talk about a couple of projects that Engineering is either actively involved in, they're either close to commencement or they're up and rolling. So the first project is Carr Street, Packard Avenue, and Earp Boys Avenue. So we're nearly at the finish line with this project and just to give a quick basis on it. So this was a sanitary sewer line ink kind replacement project. We installed over 550 feet of new eight-inch sanitary sewer line. We lined 160 feet of sanitary sewer line. This project benefited over 20 homeowners. The original bid cost was $391,476 and by the time it's all said and done, we think that we'll have a net savings of close to $45,601.75. It's also worth mentioning that this project was designed and monitored completely in-house by the Engineering Department. Next project that I wanted to touch base on is Johnson-Fort Bogus Drive and Florida Street Water Boosting Station Project. So this is a project that's currently under active construction. This project is basically to increase potable water pressure to Ashland customers. This project will benefit over 160 existing customers for the City of Ashland. We're building two 22GPM booster stations, one at Bogus Drive and one at Florida Street. And we're also building a 40GPM booster station at Johnson-Fort that will have a supplemental chlorine feed. The bid cost for this one is around $2.7 million. It's also worth mentioning that the two projects that I just spoke on, they are completely funded by our funds. Next thing that I wanted to speak on is the Get the Lead Out Initiative. So the Get the Lead Out Initiative is a requirement of every water system in the United States to identify service line material. Contractors from the U.S. EPA's Get the Lead Out Initiative will be onsite along with City of Ashland personnel in the areas south from Central Avenue between 6th Street and 12th Street, September 9th through 11th. They will be knocking on doors to try to determine water service line material type for services in this area. Yard cars are currently being placed in these areas in advance of the door knocking and I believe as of about an hour ago, the majority of the yard carts have been placed. So customers can identify their own service line and upload their information to the customer survey, which you can find on that QOR code. They can also be found on the City of Ashland's website. Or customers can allow GLO, accompanied by COA employees, to identify the service line. It's worth mentioning that each service line that can be identified by this method ends up being a cost savings of around $700 per home. I also just wanted to mention there's no need to be alarmed as it's highly unlikely that any service line will be identified as lead. In the event that lead is discovered, customers can contact the utility office at 606-385-3200. And opening up to any questions.
First of all, a great report.
Thank you, sir.
And I love to hear, and I think we all do, that you're under budget on these when you do it yourself.
Yes.
You all do an outstanding job in your department.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I think it's really good to mention that since you've come on board, we've been able to do, in previous, we've been able to do some of these projects in-house, engineering, from the beginning to the end, and that's a big cost saver to our taxpayers, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry, for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Good job.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Wheeler?
Nothing, sir, the mayor.
All right. Let's move into our public participation, allowing anyone that'd like to address the commission to come to the podium and state your name and your address. And we're allowed five minutes to speak. And if anyone would like to do that, they can come forward.
Hello.
Your address?
Kristy Bear, 84, private drug, 11202 in Chesapeake, Ohio. I think everybody here knows me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kristy Bear. I'm the owner of Jerk Rowley's Pub on Green If I Avenue. Next month will be open, a year, sorry, year anniversary. I wrote this down just because I know I have five minutes and it's a lot. I come here today on behalf of myself and the other small-owned restaurants in downtown area that are included in the EDC. And I don't know if you guys know what the EDC is, but the EDC is the Entertainment Destination Center, and it was launched by the city in 2022 and it works closely with Brandy, which is now Celeste, at Visit Ashland. She kind of keeps track of it and puts it on the website and things like that. Originally, it was put in place to boost hospitality and tourism by allowing customers to purchase alcoholic drinks in designated-to-go cups from participating businesses in the area and enjoy the drinks within the district boundaries during special events. There's a map of the EDC. When the EDC is in effect, on the website, it's listed events like sub-promotion, Pope Landing, things like that that have alcohol. It'll be listed on the website. That way, I know as a business owner that the EDC is in effect and I know to get my cups out. Brandy, now Celeste, is always a go-to for me to text and be like, are we EDC or we not? And do I have cups? And yes, we have, we need cups, whatever. Those included on the map of small business like myself is Jerk Rowley's, Fat Patties, The Mill, the Sawstone River Room, Kell's Tavern, and then the new Tuscan Prom, which used to be the Winchester, but Tuscan Prom's just getting here, just met the owner today, so they're not, they probably don't know what the EDC is yet because we haven't had an event. As a business owner in downtown Ashland, I keep up with every event that the EDC is open on. I also keep up with everything that the Paramount has going on, anything that is going to affect me. When we had the Carr Show, if I can get people in my door from any of these events, it helps me out, helps me make more money. I try to always put it on Facebook and make sure that I'm advertising for not just myself, but any event downtown that pulls people down. And I hope that I'm always advertising for other people that are just like me. I'm hopeful, and I've talked to all these business owners weekly normally, but I'm hopeful that somebody will go to Kell's Tavern and eat dinner and then come to my place and play singo for the evening and have a couple hours with me, a couple hours with her, and then we both, you know, make money from it and we both get those customers. So I'm here because on Friday, July 25th, I drove past Sawstone River Room on my way to work. And Sawstone are friends of ours. We want them to do well. We have a lot of customers that walk back and forth between Sawstone and us and the hotel and Fat Patties. The EDC signs were out in front of Sawstone. So I texted my bar manager and said, is there an event today? Like, I was excited, there's an event, something's going on that I didn't, that I missed, I didn't know about it. And he said, I don't know of anything going on. I said, do we have signs? Do we have EDC signs? And he said, no. So I texted Celeste and at that time, she had just started, like maybe a week before, so she wasn't real sure. But she texted Amber Berry, who is on the council here, the events committee here, and said, you know, is the EDC in place? She was told to text the police department. So she texted the police department, I forget who she said her contact was, but she texted the police department and they said, yes, the EDC is in effect for Sawstone. So I'm like, okay, so I don't, I kind of dismissed it. It was already in the middle of the EDC because they had it from 3:00 to 8:00, so I moved on. Sawstone has had an EDC event every single Friday for, I don't know how many Fridays, I don't, I don't have that information, from 3:00 to 8:00 that I don't know about, that Fat Patties don't know about, that Kell's don't know about, that The Mill don't know about. So Amber ended up coming into Jerks on, I have the date, what, probably three weeks ago. We met at Jerks. I questioned that uses of the EDC because in the EDC rules, it says the boundaries are going to be plainly marked in the city as to where customers can go with the cup. Because if you go outside of the boundaries, you've broke the rules, you can't do that. So you have to, you have to have signs set up to say this is the boundaries of the EDC. So I questioned her about that. Also, the events aren't listed on the website anywhere for me to be able to see, and none of us have been notified. Kelly's here today with Kell's Tavern, talked to Michael closely, talked to Scott Wamsley closely, and none of us have been notified when the EDC is open. So I would have scheduled music, I would have scheduled some kind of activity, I would have had a drink special, something, if I knew that customers were walking over. But nobody knows because they're the only ones that have the signs out front that say EDC. So we put the EDC in effect in the city to help the city as a whole, but it's only being used by Sawstone. They have a food truck coming in on those days and they also have another application in for Saturday events. We have a kitchen. We don't, we don't need a food truck. But we put in an application over two weeks ago to be able to have the same events, to be able to have, this Saturday, it was supposed to start, but now we've had two weeks go by and it hasn't been approved. This Saturday starts college football. We wanted to have tailgate parties, bring people in, watch the big game, have hot dogs and hamburgers grilled outside. We already talked to head department, we got it approved, just waiting on the committee to say we can do it, but it's not, it's said that we can do it. So this week, like tomorrow, Sawstone has the EDC in effect, they have signs, I don't, my stuff's not been approved yet. So it's very confusing on, it seems like they're helping one person and not helping the other, and that's not, that's not okay with me. Like, I want them to benefit from, if I've got somebody, we have the same customers, I want them to benefit, I want everybody to benefit, but there needs to be some way that it's fair to be able to say the EDC is open. I talked to Amber about, there has to be a contact, there has to be a way to contact the owners of these places to let them know. So two weeks ago, an hour before, when I said, can I have my signs, after we talked, I want, I would like my EDC signs put out so my customers know that the EDC is open, no signs. So she texted the us owners and said, the EDC, Sawstone has the EDC from 3:00 to 8:00 today. And then yesterday, I texted her and said, what about tomorrow? They have it tomorrow from 3:00 to 8:00. So do you see my frustration with, how is the EDC being?
We'll have to investigate that.
Yeah, the EDC is supposed to be a citywide event and it's supposed to bring people downtown because they want to walk around with the cup, and it's not being done that way. So it's, it's not hurting my business, but it's sure not helping me like it's helping them. And they have a food truck on those days because they don't have a kitchen. I have a kitchen. I invested in a kitchen. I invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in that building that could have been torn down, was easily able to be condemned, but I chose to put a business in it, in the City of Ashland. And the commission has always supported the things that I do, they've been there, being customers, everything. But it's like, there's just some unfairness going on that's, that's not personal. Do well because it makes me do well, but I also want to be treated the same.
Understood. And we'll investigate that and get back to you.
Okay.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about it?
Yeah.
The committee's making these decisions, is that what I understand?
There's an events committee in the City of Ashland, yeah. And then, I'm not sure.
Not the commission, this?
No, not at all. Not at all the commission. I don't, I know that some of you didn't know what the EDC was, and it just became, it's only maybe five or six events on the calendar that's EDC is open, and it's usually, I don't know what the last event was, but it was an alcohol-free event, so, was it fireworks? Fourth of July is not an alcohol event, so it wasn't an EDC event.
It sounds like it was intended for special.
Yes, it is.
Not every Friday.
Right, exactly.
I mean, I recall a request being made for the food truck and.
That was to have tables and chairs and trucks on the side.
Yeah, because that was not, there was no discussion about there being any special treatment in the process. And I understand your statement about you have a big investment in your kitchen.
Yeah.
That's always been the legitimate.
Yes.
Criticism of the use of food trucks for feeding without downed restaurants. Very legitimate, I understand.
Yeah, that was my other question is, if this is happening to me, like are other food trucks allowed to come in? Like, who says this one food truck gets to come in on this day? When you fill out an events application, there's two parts to it. You fill out the application, you mark what you need. If you need a food truck, you mark that, they have to approve that. If you need somebody to come in and cater food, alcohol, you mark that. I don't need that, I'm providing all of that for my event. So it's a real cut and dry. If you need a food truck, you mark that, they have to approve that. If you need somebody to come in and cater food, alcohol, you mark that. I don't need that, I'm, I'm providing all of that for my event. So it's a real cut and dry event. It's, it's not hard to look at and say, they're doing everything.
Mr. Wheeler, could we get copies of whatever was created, the committee, the EDC committee, and what authority they have and all that?
Sure, there's, there's not a designated EDC committee, there's a special events committee that applications go to in the EDC.
Who are they?
That is comprised, I believe, of.
Amber Berry and Sean.
It's staff, there are staff members that are involved in that. Director Murray, Superintendent Berry, I believe, police, fire.
The ABC.
Legal has a assistant corporation counsel, McKay is on there right now, CED, I believe, has representation on there. There's multiple departments that are represented on that. It's a process that I think has been going on for quite some time, it's not a new, newly developed process. The EDC was created a few years ago, it's by ordinance, it is typically managed by the ABC administrator. I believe for the EDC to be activated, that's something that the ABC administrator would have to speak on, he's not here, that's Chief Todd Kelly. I think we would have to ask him, he probably the best source of information for that. I do know from speaking with him, he's got some concerns about how it activates and when it activates and when it applies and when it doesn't apply, that he's, he may be interested in proposing some changes to.
What we're hearing, it sounds like there's a bit of overreach going on to the benefit of one licensee as opposed to the other licensees, and it's not right.
I, I can't say that it is or that it isn't, yeah.
I'm just saying based on what we're.
My, my general understanding right now is that when the EDC is activated, it is activated for all, it is not activated for.
If you're all are done.
Yeah, it's, it's.
About what she's saying, she's, they're, they're not getting notified, so it's not.
Right, there's no notification system to tell us, like, I'm, I'm texting Amber to ask her, okay, is the EDC in effect tomorrow? And she's saying, yes. But, and then I'm texting my other friends who own these restaurants and, and put it on Facebook, I don't know if you saw the Facebook post that says, come downtown today, it's Friday, from three to eight, the EDC is in effect, and you can walk from all these businesses.
And, and I, I get the desire to promote businesses everywhere we can, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the use of this process, and it sounds to me like it was intended for like Fourth of July, pub landing, you know, these special events, not every Friday night.
As a rest break event.
I had asked Chief Kelly that if he had concerns about when it activates and how it activates, if he could maybe get some information in writing to me so that if there were changes needed to be made to the ordinance that could be brought to you all in organized fashion. I will say, I don't know what the notification process is to the general public or to the businesses of what that, of what that is.
Is it notification to the other businesses?
Yeah, there is a way. And it's kind of like, this is the first, I think this is the first time this has actually happened, that it's been a super small, one person event and not a citywide, you know, everyone's invited sort of thing.
I would also say we've got a changeover in ABC administrator, and we also have a changeover in Visit AKY management, so I.
And I, I don't want to be critical, I want to clear that I'm not being critical of the business that is involved.
Right, same, same.
I'm not being critical of it.
But to me, every Friday night defeats the whole purpose of the ordinance, it's, it's special, it's special, not regular.
I, I didn't draft the ordinance, so I, that was several years ago, I'm not sure what the exact intent was behind it at the time of when it was to activate and when it was to not, or how it's currently being implemented. I do know, like I said, Chief Kelly has got some thoughts and concerns about that and intends to come before you all, I believe, relatively soon to see clarification on how this will work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I would also encourage you to have a discussion with Chief Kelly as ABC administrator for anything regarding EDC or ABC administration. I think he's probably the best source for you to go to. I know that you all have had conversations about various items in the past, and your business is obviously very close to the police department, so I, I would encourage you to do that next week.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission? Ms. Van.
Hello, my name is Rachel Crawford, I live at four twenty-two Bellefonte Princess Road in Ashland, Kentucky. First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here today as a business owner to bring your attention to a matter. I'm here to address Ashland City Code one three zero zero two, which was established in nineteen thirty-nine, and states, and I quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to undertake to tell fortunes or to foretell events to come, or to locate lost or stolen property, or attempt to practice palmistry, phrenology, or fortune telling in any manner in the city. This code directly impacts my ability to make a livelihood in the city of Ashland. I'm a professional spiritual coach and tarot reader. I'm not a fortune teller, and I don't predict the future. I take my job and my clients' problems very seriously. I happen to use tools such as tarot, reiki, and other means to help my clients find clarity, insight, and guidance to the issues going on in their lives. And because of this ban, I cannot practice in person or open a business in Ashland to serve my clients. No government entity should be in the position of telling any business owner what kind of religious or spiritual practices they can bring into their business for their clients. And no government entity should be in the position to restrict the general public as to what type of religious or spiritual practices they are allowed to seek out in order to find the guidance and the answers they would like to use in their lives. This ordinance is a direct violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. It directly impacts my freedom of speech and freedom of religious expression. There is legal precedent that establishes that these types of bans or ordinances no longer hold up in court. I can provide you many examples of case law that show every time these types of bans or ordinances are challenged in court, they do not withstand court scrutiny and are struck down based on First Amendment, First Amendment free speech violations, wasting a city's valuable time, money, and resources fighting to uphold these bans. It is the right of every citizen of Ashland to be given the same equal opportunity to free commerce and enterprise and the right to free speech and freedom of religious expression. So what I'm kindly asking you today is to completely repeal City Code one three zero zero two, which bans fortune telling in the city of Ashland because this ban is egregious, outdated, and is no longer applicable. I know you may not agree with what I'm asking for, for you to do today. But I do know that there's one thing that we can all agree on as Americans, as good citizens of the state of Kentucky and the city of Ashland, and that it's imperative that we always fight for what the Constitution stands for and our First Amendment rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler, did you respond?
Would, would you like me to respond?
Did you respond to her inquiry?
Yeah, sure.
Just to kind of clarify, and appreciate your comments, Ms. Crawford, and your emails over the past week or so. I actually think we last emailed this morning, and we had set a time to meet next week to go over a couple of things. You also had some questions about condition of use permitting.
Yes.
When you brought this to me, and I believe you also had messaged multiple elected officials as well, and I was also given a request for comment from the paper earlier this week that I said I was still looking at it, or last week, but needed to kind of review it. I have, think responded and advised that it wouldn't be this commission meeting because the deadline for submissions for request for commission action had passed, and I'm kind of the one that enforces that rule, so I didn't want to be breaking the rule that I'm seeking to enforce to give these guys enough time to evaluate everything. But I didn't intend to bring a repeal of that ordinance that you brought to my attention at the next commission meeting. And I still intend to do that, as I emailed, I think, last week and told you that's what I intend to do.
I very much appreciate.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's what will be before you all sometime next week. I did know you were going to be here today, I'm obviously glad to hear anybody speak publicly, but also you've had mentioned to me something about in those emails about a city official or somebody telling you that you could not take part in that kind of act, and I just want to be clear for you and everyone else in the commission. You sent me some text messages that you received from somebody, it did not appear to me to be anybody related to the city, I think you told me it was somebody related to the Chamber of Commerce. I have not been able to identify who that is or who they even potentially spoke with, with the city. I've not found any evidence that you submitted a business, business license application for us to evaluate officially.
Actually, I have, and I do have a business application.
You do have a, when did you submit that?
A few weeks ago, and I did get approved.
Okay.
And I do have one.
All right, but did it have tarot card reading on there?
No, I had to strictly apply just because I do sell physical products as well, I could only apply to sell my physical products, I couldn't apply to do tarot readings.
And you were issued the license?
I was, but I couldn't apply to do tarot readings, I could only.
But you were issued.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's kind of what my question really, I guess if I have a question for you is, who told you you couldn't apply for that?
Nobody told me I couldn't apply for the business license, I was told that I couldn't participate, and like, I was told that I couldn't read tarot in front of the church.
As, as a, as a Visit AKY marketing.
Maker's event, and then when I started to do more digging, I really, because my husband and I were looking at renting a physical space here downtown that's next to the little bakery here, I think it's like on Fifteenth Street. And then when I started doing more digging, I realized that I wouldn't be approved because more than likely that's too close, it's, I think it's within three hundred feet of a church, because there's that zoning ordinance that says that there's the possibility that since I do a service, which is tarot reading, that I wouldn't be approved by the zoning ordinance because I'm too close to a church, which is.
Without having the opportunity to evaluate that part of the business application, it's really hard for me to respond, because that, that goes through multiple departments, including the city.
And that's why I didn't bring that up today, because I, obviously, one, through the emails that we spoke, I realized that is going to be a separate matter.
Okay.
So I figured, start here.
Sure.
That way, if I did want to participate in an event, as long as it falls outside of, you know, being, next to one of those places that fall under the zoning, I would still be able to practice in person as long as it didn't fall within the zoning ordinance. So that is a separate matter.
Just to kind of clarify, do we need to meet next week, or have you kind of got your stuff?
I would like to meet to talk about that, so if we do, my husband and I do decide to open a physical location, I know what's next steps to take, because that's kind of, has been our plan once we moved here. So I'd like to just know where to go with that. But right now, this is where, you know, start here and then take the next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Does anyone else like to address the commission? Ms. Bear.
Good afternoon, Mike Maynard, Hillcrest Resurrection, eighteen nineteen Eloise Street. A little bit late coming in today because we were doing our preschool orientation. This is our forty-first year of offering preschool to our neighbors for free. And what's even more exciting about that is a quick history. In nineteen seventy-one, over at Christ Methodist Church, they just started helping people with clothes and food after the building of Hillcrest and Bruce Apartments. You just had a lot of people in an area and they just started helping. Couple of years after that, we started operating in a couple of apartments in Bruce Apartments, and was there for about a dozen years. And the whole purpose of building our community center was, one, so that we could do dental work, we had two dental offices, which has enabled us to, to do full dentistry there now. And the other reason was so that we could do preschool for our neighborhood. And so that opened up in nineteen eighty-five for the preschool. And so about, probably about fifteen, eighteen years after that, we were able to get the building right next to the mission so that we could do preschool in its own separate building, and we have been there since. This year, though, we had a great opportunity to move into what was the old Pollard Daycare, which is the basement of Christ Methodist Church. During COVID, they shut down and weren't able to open back up, and so that space has become available. And so, so today, we did our orientation at our new location for our preschool, and we're back home, where we started, where the mission started at, has been going for over fifty years now. And so just the partnerships that we've had, we've had Quandis Group come and read to our kids, we have had, we have Kinder Music that's integrated into our program, every single kid that enrolls in our preschool gets into Kinder Music and gets those instructions. We have had fire and police come and do programs, volunteers from the community. We just, we get a lot of support. And so, and today, our preschool teacher, it's her twenty-sixth year with us. And, and so, and then our preschool aide was actually, when I worked at Mission Eighty-Five, she was, she was in my after-school program, and so she's been with us for eleven years. And so it's just, we just wanted to share just the thankfulness for the support that we have received throughout the years for our preschool and for the mission, and, and we're excited next Tuesday to begin our forty-first year of preschool.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming, Mike.
Well done. Mike, I stopped in that location with a member of that church, and it's going to be a great facility for you guys, it's, it's wonderful space, so congratulations.
As part of that reading program too, and we'd love, probably need to continue that. All right, anyone else like to address the commission? Hearing done, I will move into our old business, Ms. Wheeler.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct to the mayor to execute amendment number one to the agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, retaining Strand and provide engineering services for final design and construction services for the waste water treatment plant expansion and improvements project.
Second discussion?
Yeah. Eric, could you maybe address this a little bit? That's a thirty-three percent increase in their fee. And I, you know, and looking at what they're providing, it looks like activities that we should, that should have been anticipated in their original bid, I mean, when you talk about record drawings, final completion letter, warranty, these are all things that you would anticipate, you know, would have been in the original deals. What's, what's the deal?
So I'll start off, I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to defend the request, I just want to know what, what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, so I have some notes here, so this is mainly to allow Ashland to use StAG grant funds for engineering services instead of for construction and avoid introducing build America or buy America, build America, BABA requirements into the project. Introducing BABA requirements late in the game will, will have led to bidding document changes and a likely increase in the construction costs. This amendment increases the difference between the four million dollars and how much of the previous engineering payments made by Ashland can be applied to the four million dollar StAG grant. So engineering and bidding phase of the project has increased by about one and a half years due to KDA, permit approval delays and changes in city personnel, Strand assistance and funding applications, construction phase of the project has, has also increased from thirty-six months to forty-two months. The typical engineering cost for design, bidding, and construction for a project is about ten percent of the construction cost. With this amendment, engineering cost will be about five point three percent of the construction cost, almost half the typical fees. Ashland personnel have worked with Strand to be good stewards of Ashland, rate payers' money. Ultimately, the agreement is time and expense, so any money not used by Strand will go back to the city, or in this case can be used to repair O and M manuals, SOPs, et cetera, that are not needed but not included in engineering scope because of the limited funds at initial stage.
Hopefully I misunderstood you, you didn't say that Strand is charging us more because different city personnel?
No, no. Thank you.
One of the things, it sounds like it's because of the tariffs, is that what I'm, what I'm, Eric?
That could be part of it, part of this is because of the, and I, I think I want to highlight this as part of what Barry said, and, and in Director Atkins' defense, in trying to explain, I think he's operating from some of Utility Director Mark Hall's notes, who's absent this week, but.
I get all of, it seems to be when somebody's asking for a one-third increase in their fee, that it might behoove them to show up in person and be able to defend the request, and I, you know, I don't, I don't get mailing in the request for, for a third increase in your fee.
If, if the commission would like, we can certainly, you know, table this and ask them to come to the, the next meeting.
That's what I would like to do, I would like to table the second reading, I've moved it there. Thank you, Barry, and that's not in any way reflective of either view, but.
A lot of it was the extra time in construction, Barry, we worked with Mark, Mark's done most of this. I talked to the engineers because we were. I talked to the engineers because we were, the feds were concerned when we used the STAG grant, it was 4 million, then all of a sudden it was 5.3. They had the same concerns as you all. So when we investigated this, Strand said a lot of it is the extra time in construction. And there was another part of it where the changes that were made, there were a lot of electrical changes made to the plant between when they bid and a lot of the electrical engineering work also drove up the cost.
And then also hear that where the state didn't approve it for a year and a half?
Yes, yes, I have.
Or being held.
We, and with the STAG grant. Yeah. So the electrical work, the timing and the division of water and the timing of the construction. Extending out the construction did save considerably on construction cost. And that was one of the reasons that it was extended. But they are going to have to have someone on site for that extra eight months and they're actually going to have to have someone in Ashland for that extra eight months, which was not included in the original proposal.
Mike, here. Yeah, well, we have, we have a motion that we table. We have first, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Table that. All right, I'm B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting Standard Operating Procedures of the Ashland Fire Department and Repealing Ordinance Number 97, Series of 2022.
Second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Tri-State Construction for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 2926 and 2928 Central Avenue in the Amount of $7,760 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the general fund.
Second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Tri-State Construction for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 4020 Mound Street in the Amount of $6,400 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the general fund.
Second, discussion?
In the fiscal note on D, E and F, it's, it says fiscal year to date expenditures are minus $2,000. I'm, I'm not sure what that means.
These are the first demos on this fiscal year that are coming off. These are the first demolitions from this fiscal year that are coming off the budget. They were on the previous fiscal year.
It's just 2,000.
It's a dash.
It's a dash.
Yeah, it's just a margin, yes.
It's not a minus 2,000.
Yeah.
It's just a dash.
It's a dash, it's not a minus.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm E.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Likes Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 351 Rigo Street in the Amount of $12,500 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the general fund.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm F.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Likes Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 2724 Roberts Drive in the Amount of $4,400 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the general fund.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Part Six Benefits, See Vacation Leave of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 51, Series of 2017 as previously amended.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, and this is tabled from August 12th, 2025 Regular Meeting, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the City of Ashland's 2021 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Approval and Implementation.
Somebody. Second, discussion? If you have all of it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm aye.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, and this is also tabled from August 12th, 2025 Regular Meeting, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the City of Ashland's 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Approval and Implementation.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye. I'm slow. Can you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda.
A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting, Authorizing and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of August 28th, 2025.
Somebody, second, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about consent item number, or I guess the first one, letter A. The purchase and labor of all material for miscellaneous asphalt and concrete repair work. What would it cost or do we know what it would cost to bring a crew on here in the city to do this? Because this is an annual cost, I mean, we bid this out every year. Would we have a number? I mean, I know I'm just, you know, pulling this out of my hat, but do we have a number on that?
Consent A.
Consent A.
For us, for having city crews do the patching.
Actually, Tony and I, that's one of the things that we've thought over the years. Could you not only have the 699,000 here for repairs, you actually have the sidewalk replacement also? So we can, we can look with HR and see what these jobs would come out with salary wise and we can get back with the number. Barry can assist with concrete costs.
Or as long as we can find something for them to do in the dead winter, you know, for a lot of concrete or asphalt roads.
We, we can investigate that, maybe add that to a work session for you guys.
Thank you.
I did have a question, Barry, with the reservoir, you may come up, just we don't have to drain the reservoir, right? This time we're just like dredging it?
We're going to drop the water level down to 15 feet and then they are going to dredge it. So no, we won't, we won't completely remove all the water.
It won't be like they did 10 or 12 years ago?
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yes, it was. All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. New business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, Inc. for Engineering Services for the Optimization and Growth Distribution System Modeling Project in the Amount of 22, I'm sorry, $222,128 for the Department of Utility Operations as authorized by Ordinance Number 52, Series of 2025.
Motion, somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting and Authorizing the Submission of the 2025 Housing Choice voucher Program Administrative Plan for the City of Ashland, Department of Community Economic Development, Division of Assisted Housing, Section Eight.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Enacting a Code of Ordinances for the City of Ashland, Kentucky Revising, Amending, Restating, Codifying and Compiling Certain Existing General Ordinances of the Political Subdivision Dealing with Subjects Embraced in Such Code of Ordinances and Repealing Ordinance Number 142, Series of 2000.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and BLK Construction LLC for all labor materials, labor and materials for miscellaneous concrete and asphalt repair work for the Departments of Public Services and Utilities through July 31, 2026 in the Amount of $699,930.
Second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland and Gallus Sanitation Services, Inc. for the Ashland Water Treatment Plant and the De-watering of Reservoir Solids Project in the Amount of $90,123 for the Department of Utilities.
Somebody, second, discussion?
I'm just glad it came in under budget.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement for Professional Services Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Howerton Engineering and Servant PLLC for Special Inspections Related to the Boggs Drive, Florida Street and Johnson Fort Water Booster Station Repair Project in the Amount of $23,000 for the Department of Engineering.
Second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Awarding the Bid for the Purchase of Hydrofluosilic Acid, I thought we were done with chemicals for this year, to Univar Solutions USA LLC and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Univar Solutions USA LLC for the Purchase of Hydrofluosilic Acid at a price of $3.60 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Management. Hydrofluosilic.
We, we just know the price will end up.
Do I hear a, a motion? Somebody, second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Creating the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Committee.
Motion. Second, discussion? This will take a lot of pressure off them. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm aye.
Reading and Adoption of a Municipal Order Entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit a Loan Application in the Amount of $5,895,578 to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, KIA, for the 2026 Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the Water Treatment Plant CAC Filter Project F26-003 for the Department of Utilities.
Somebody, second, first and a second, any discussion?
Do you think we have a good chance of receiving this, Michelle? Well, this is a loan.
Yeah, this is a loan. We're hoping that we have a good chance of getting some principal forgiveness because this is a requirement that we are going to have to take care of.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I'm J.
Reading and Adoption of a Municipal Order Entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit a Loan Application in the Amount of $1,604,423 to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the 2026 Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the Water Treatment Plant GAC Filter Project F26-003E for the Department of Utilities.
Second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Reading and Adoption of a Municipal Order Entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Traffic Safety Grant Between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety for the Ashland Police Department and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute any and all documents related to said grant.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm L.
Reading and Adoption of a Municipal Order Entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the Annual Housing Choice Program, Section Eight Management Assets Program Certification for the City of Ashland, Division of Assisted Housing to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm M.
Sign Ordinance Appeal Pathways, Inc. Is Seeking Approval to Exceed the Maximum Size of Sign From the Approved 20 Square Feet to 48 Inches by 234.801 Inches at 2610 Oak P Road.
Somebody, second, discussion? This won't block anything, right? Any views on Oak View?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm N.
The Mayor requests the Board's concurrence on the appointment of Heather Moore to the Cemetery Board for a four-year term beginning August 28, 2025 to August 28, 2029.
Somebody, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm O.
The Mayor requests the Board's concurrence on the reappointments of Willie McCullough and Cindy Blanton to the Cemetery Board for a four-year term expiring on September 17th, 2029.
Second, discussion?
Yeah, what, what does the board actually, I mean, I have nothing against hitting one of these fine ladies, but what does the board actually do? One of the things they do is they set the fees for opening and closing a grave. Basically set the fees in the cemetery. We need ladies, had some discussions because the cemetery, you know, for financial reasons.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm P.
The Mayor requests the Board's concurrence on the appointment of Sergio Garcia to the Tourism Board to fulfill the term of Michael Miller expiring on August 26, 2026.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we need a.
I have one item that needed a hand carry, you all mayor, regarding an emergency declaration. It's just a resolution that I'll read and I can explain it in more detail.
Emergency declaration?
Yeah. A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky declaring a local state of emergency effective August 27, 2025. And that's regarding an 18-inch sewer line near the intersection of Pollard Road and 13th Street behind the former Foodland Grocery Store that failed and has created an emergency and has also impacted a storm sewer line.
Motion. Is that kind of any bigger at this point? I know they said it was five times bigger when they saw it or? Do we have any update on it again?
I haven't got any update. Have to give some really good kudos on quick thinking to a few different city staff members. Bruce Worthington being one, Barry Atkins being another, Justin Royster and some, I'm sure there's other folks that were immediately on this. But we had a group Southern Ohio trenching, it was immediately in the area when this started really becoming a major problem. when this started really becoming a major problem. And you can imagine, 18-inch clay pipe sewer line and a storm sewer draining to the exact same area created a significant amount of water. And they reacted very, very quickly to try to mitigate that until Barry took me out there. I appreciate him doing that. I met Justin Royster and had Bruce Worthington on the phone explaining to me exactly what the situation was. And gave me the information to, to sign that emergency declaration. The request at this point is for $30,000. The original PO for this type of work was for about $30,000. This is about double. That's about five to six days of extra work that Bruce Worthington believes would remedy the project at this point. And I told him if there's any other issue or updating, to let us know as soon as possible. I have not heard any update on that this morning. I'm assuming that means that it is relatively mitigated and handled and that work is continuing. But with that amount of water going to the exact same area, especially with the soil being as dry as it is, it created a pretty significant issue that they needed to react to immediately.
So with the emergency, when we vote in our second, do we have to do a second reading?
Because it's a resolution, it's below.
Okay, all right. Basically, approving your emergency declaration.
It's ratifying what I approved yesterday.
Good, okay, good deal.
All right, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any other information need to come before the board?
Nothing further, Mayor. There's no need for, there's no need for an executive session.
All right, we stand adjourned.
Did you want to...[1729.22]